Appeals to Order. At 7:00 PM on Thursday, September 10th, 2020, uh, virtually. It's a WebEx meeting. Um. And all that goes with that. This meeting is being recorded. If any other persons present are doing this thing, you must notify the chairperson, that's me, at this time. Anybody else recording this? I'm not hearing anything. I'm not seeing anything. So with that, I'm going to try to lose just this thing. And I did. And so far, I haven't lost anybody else. This is good. Um, so I wanted, I wanted to let everybody know. The, the members, uh, have, have already gotten a copy of this, I think. But if anybody's here on the application of Kelly and Philip Calaschano. Hope I'm getting it right. Now, 167 Log Plain Road. Uh, that application has been withdrawn.
Without prejudice.
Well, we'll have to vote on that, but if, uh, so if, there's no point in hanging around until whatever time we scheduled that for, 7:45. So that application will be withdrawn. Um. Just so everybody has that information. Okay. Yeah, if everybody else is all set. Peters, Peters here. Yes. Peter, yeah, okay, great. Thank you. All right, so let's get going. Um. So. I'm gonna read the notice of application, uh, for Donna Wallace, Notice of Public Hearing. The property located 95 Lund Drive, Assessors Map, R33 Lot 52, which is located in the Rural Residential Zoning District for a special permit for certain sections. Excuse me. 200-5.3 E2 and 200-8.3 zoning ordinance in order to allow a 20% reduction of the side yard setback along the west side, or should say west boundary from 20 feet to 16 feet at this location. Uh, Donna Wallace is here, I think. Yes?
Yes, I am.
Okay, so let me explain how this works, and then everybody else who's uh, coming up behind you, hopefully they're listening to, so I don't have to do this one. So in a second, the members of the board will introduce themselves. You'll introduce yourself. Uh, you'll tell us what you want to do, where you want to do it, and why you want to do it. From time to time, the members of the board may have a question. At some point, we'll open it up to public comment. Uh, once public comment is closed, then, uh, the members of the board will finish off with any other questions they have. And, and we will, uh, we will take this up tonight, I'm, I'm fairly sure. Um, but we have two other hearings that are right after you, so we had, we have to try to stay to our timetable. So you're welcome to stay, or, or you can check back with Eric tomorrow. Um, from the time any decision is, uh, made, uh, the, it will be typed up and filed with the court. From that time, there's a 20-day appeal period in which anybody who feels aggrieved by the actions of the board may appeal to a higher court. Uh, once the 20-day appeal period is done, then you can do whatever we say you can do. Uh, do you understand that?
Yes.
Okay, all right. So I, I know you have good counsel with you. Uh, I, I'm not sure if he's with you tonight, but anyways, um. So that's, that's where we are. Um. So with that, if the members of the board, uh, because this is such an odd little thing, if you could identify yourselves, uh, starting with Deb Jokes. You have to unmute yourself to identify yourself. Deb? You have to unmute yourself. There. Is that you? I can't do it, apparently.
There you go.
Oh, there you go.
Well, I had it.
Oh. Lost it again. Anyways, Deb Jokes is the next person down there in the corner.
Uh, no, I'm right, I'm right here. I, I muted myself and then you muted me.
There we go. Okay. All right, so go ahead, David.
David Singer.
Peter?
What was the act?
Oh, and?
Jim Nguyen.
And I'm Mark Maloney. And Donna, why don't you go ahead and tell us what you want to do, please?
Um, I would like to build a sunroom, um, 12 by 18 on the backside, and I would have to put it, I'd have to have the variance because I cannot go far enough over on my back wall because of the kitchen window. I would, that's, that's, I would need the variance to build the room that size.
Okay. It's actually, it's a, it's a permit, not a variance, it's a technical term, but, uh, it doesn't matter.
Okay, yeah.
So what you're looking for, somebody's got to stop making that noise. What you're looking for, Donna, is a 20% reduction of the side yard setback along the westerly boundary from 20 feet to 16 feet at your location. Okay. And that's all you need. Okay.
That's it.
All right. Uh, questions from the board for Donna Wallace? Anybody? Yeah, David, go ahead.
Hi Donna, this is David Singer. We spoke yesterday after I came out to look at the property. How are you doing?
Yep. I'm fine.
Good. You, you were, I liked your explanation. I just want to make sure, in, in one of the, one of the reasons to get this special permit, so you're saying that you can't develop the lot at the 20-foot setback because of the septic system location and the fact that if you went to build that size of a sunroom at 20 feet back, you would be blocking your, uh, your windows, your kitchen windows, is that correct?
It, it, that's correct. That is correct.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions from the board?
I have a question on the board. In the, in the regulations, it, it appears here lots not served by a public sewer or lots located on a water supply are not able to apply for a variance or every sort of variances, uh, a special permit? Am I misinterpreting that?
Yeah. They can, yeah, they can apply for a special permit. Varian, variances is a, is a very technical.
That, that, that's, that's in here in the, in the regulation that says that, so I'm just curious what that means.
Where do you see that, Peter?
In 532, the last paragraph and 2. Relax. Lots reduced to this section shall not be further reduced or whatever. But the last sentence is lots not served by public sewer or lots located in a water supply protection district shall not be eligible for reduction in lot area under this provision.
Well, why don't we ask, is this, is this, it's a septic?
No.
I guess I just said that, didn't I?
Yeah, but it's talking about a reduction of the lot size, right?
I, I'm, I'm just, you know, it's about a reduction, so.
Yeah, no, we, it's talking about every. It's talking about a reduction of lot size.
All right, that's, it's E1, it's E1, not E2.
Okay.
It's referring to E1, which is not where she's asking for relief.
Right. Thank you, David.
You're welcome.
So Peter, does that answer your question?
Yes, it does.
Okay, very good. All right. So we need, we need to be careful as a board bringing up the word variance. It's sort of like builders need to be careful about bringing up the word asbestos. Okay?
Oh, okay.
Variance has, has three criteria, all of which have to be met, and it's a state, uh, law, so it, it's rarely be something that we see a need for, we see. Um, now, Deb, do you have any questions for Donna Wallace?
Um, I guess I just want to make sure I'm understanding where the addition is going. Um, so the garage is on the right side of the house, if you're on the street, and this is going to go on the back left side?
Yes, correct.
Yeah, I'm looking at an older picture. I wasn't able to get over there, um, so I am on Google Earth, so this may be old information, but looks to me like there's some trees and a fence along that side?
Yeah, well, we took the fence out, yeah. And we do have a roll, but we have, uh, our varieties down there, yeah.
Okay, so this, this addition will be on the inside of those trees? Or bushes?
Oh, it'll be inside, yeah. It's gonna be in, it's gonna be in the ha, it's gonna be in, well, I don't know how to say that, inside the house. It's not just gonna be on the edge of the house, it's gonna go in.
So it's, it's, but it's, it's not sticking out past the footprint of the house? Other than extending in the back?
No, 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 no.
Yeah.
No, it will not be sticking out on the side. No, it will not be.
Okay. Thank you.
Just for everybody concerned, the addition, the proposed addition goes off the back of the house. So. The house originally, uh, is shy on, on the setback, um, because that's the way it was built. But, uh, that was then, this is now, so she needs the, the, uh, permit with a 20% reduction to allow her to just build an addition attached to the house throughout the back. Okay, uh, Jim Nguyen?
We have some correspondence.
Yeah, uh, well, first, you have any questions for Donna?
No, I don't.
Okay, then, that's fine. Please, go ahead and read the correspondence.
Okay, this is going to Zone and Board of Appeals from the Board of Health. No comments or issues with the proposed project. The Zone and Board of Appeals from the Planning Board. Uh, the board has no issues with this request. To the Zone and Board of Appeals from the Inspector of Buildings. No comments or issues with proposed project. The Zone and Board of Appeals from the Fire Prevention Officer. No comments or issue with proposed project. And from the DPW Engineer and Superintendent, the Zone and Board of Appeals. No comments or issues with the proposed project. And that's all we have.
Okay, thank you. All right, at this time, we'll open it up to public comment. So if anybody wants to make a public comment on the application of Donna Wallace for property located 95 Lund Drive, uh, now's the time. But if you're gonna make a public comment, we need you to identify yourself and give us your address, please. Anybody? Well, it's at 7:13, public comment is open. Anybody?
Don't beg for it.
Well. I tried to do at least 60 seconds, just to be fair.
Sometimes it is hard to find that view button, I'm just saying.
Yeah, that's. Uh. I'm not seeing anybody, I'm not hearing anybody. And, yeah, we all know this is not a perfect format for doing this, but we, we try to do our best, so, like Cub Scouts. All right, uh, then I'm gonna close the public comment at 7:14. And I'll ask, uh, Donna, do you have anything else you want to add?
Uh, no, I don't.
Okay, are there any other board members with anything you would want to add? I'm gonna go down the, the line here. Deb?
No, nothing on my end, thank you.
Okay, David?
No, thank you.
Okay, uh, Peter? You're good, you're shaking your head no on this.
I'm all set.
Jim Nguyen?
I'm all set, thank you.
Okay, as am I. All right, so Donna, as I said, we're, we're actually almost on time here, which is unusual. Um, we will, we will take this, we will take this up tonight. Um, and you can stay, or you can, um, check in with Eric tomorrow. And.
Okay.
I think that's all we got, okay?
All right, thank you. I will check in with Eric tomorrow.
That's fine, thank you very much.
Thank you, have a good night.
Thank you.
Okay.
Yeah, you too. Yeah, bye.
Yeah, my favorite way of having a good night, WebEx. Um. By the way, Eric, Eric is not, Eric Corog is not with us tonight. Uh, that is wrong, wasn't that? Okay, so next up. It's 7:15 PM. Oh my gosh, we're actually dead on. Uh, so the application of Meredith and Eric Lively for property located 87 Thayer Road, Assessors Map, R26 Lot 21V, which is located in the Suburban Residential Zoning District for a special permit for certain sections. 200-4.318, 200-2.16, and 200-8.3 zoning ordinance for to allow the installation of a 5.44 kilowatt one-pole mounted solar PV system at this location. Um, yeah, I just want to grab the other packet here. So, uh, somebody is here for this, I assume. Meredith and Eric Lively are probably here for this.
Yes, we are.
So Claire.
And Claire and John from the solar store who are doing the installation are also here.
Okay, uh, you all, you all have been here before, and I assume the Livelys um, heard my description previously of how this works? So if the Livelys could answer, where are they? This is, we're not here. Yeah, it should be.
I thought they were below Claire.
Yeah. ML, she's got, her video's not on, but I think they're.
All right, that's fine. So the Livelys, I, I need to hear from you that you understand the way this works.
Y-yes, we are here and we understand.
Okay, that's fine. So, um, I think I just put the notice here. All right. So, the members of the board sitting, starting down at the far end, Deb?
Deb Jokes?
David, Eric, looking at. Peter Nguyen? Jim Nguyen, Mark Maloney, and, um, Meredith, are you doing the talking?
Um, probably we are.
Okay.
Okay, good. That sounds great.
So Meredith and Eric have asked us to design.
Claire, hold on a second.
Oh, sorry.
That's all right. Wait till I tell you to go.
Okay. You just wanted to know who was gonna go.
Yeah, kind of. Um, okay, I think, yeah, we're all set here. All right, so go, all right, go ahead now.
Okay, so the site plan review, I think everybody should have a copy of it. Um, so Meredith and Eric have asked us to per, to design them a one-pole MT, um, 16 array to go in their yard. And the maximum height is six, 15 feet. So it will not go over the greenfield solar bylaw. Um, the picture is a 20 module array. They are getting a 16. So it'll be four modules high and four modules wide. Not the five that's in the picture.
Right.
Okay. Then the next page has the entire land parcel with the blue square indicating the, where the pole array will go.
Yep.
Underneath the picture, we have the setbacks. The only one that's tight is the side one to Keegan Lane. Uh, and that will be 15 feet minimum, as is required.
Yep.
Um, there, the house is on Greenfield Town Water and Sewer, so there's no, um, sewer or leach field, septic or leach field to take into account. Um, we will still call DigSafe to confirm location of any plumbing or other incidentals. Um, third page gives you a bir, not a bird's eye, um, a road view, a street view as you approach the property on Keegan Lane. The white fence indicates the beginning of the Livelys' property. So there are trees and, um, plenty of vegetation obscuring from the first frame. The second frame has the blue square of the pole-mounted array. It's only partially observable because of Bob's Dog House, this little shed.
Yep.
That's on the property. And as you approach past the dog shed, um, again, part of the array is obscured by the fence. And you'll only see basically hat, the top half of the array um, against the house there. And then when you get past the array further on Keegan Lane, you'll see the back of the array, which is white. You will see some wires, black wires. Um.
And the frame.
And the frames, the black frames of them. Then on Thayer, basically the house's vegetation obscure all view of, of the proposed array. And then the last sheet is the, our last two sheets are the, um, spec sheets. The, um, hole.
Okay, um. Yeah, so how old is the fence? Does anybody know?
It was put in last year.
Yeah, we put the fence in last summer, so 2019.
All right, and, and, uh, so is that Bob's house, the white shed?
Yeah.
Okay. And Bob is a, uh, four-footed member of the family?
Uh, yeah, it was previously owned by a Robert Poirier.
Oh, I know, yeah, I know Bob.
We could turn it to Eric's Bob town, Eric's, uh.
Yeah? Well, I was gonna say, or, you know, is a not particularly well-loved in-laws residence, but whatever.
Yeah.
Okay, um. So Claire, yeah, this is a tracker, correct?
No, it's a single pole mount. It does not, um, move from side to side. It only tilts seasonally, so at most, they'll probably adjust it twice a year.
Okay, all right, very good. Um, okay, so now we're gonna, uh, if the Livelys don't have anything to add right this second, we're gonna go down the board for questions. Um, Deb Jokes?
Okay, um, I do have a few question, uh, a few questions on this one. Um. In reading through the application, it's my understanding you guys also have roof-mounted solar on the house, and then you're looking to add this array in addition to that?
Yes, so the system that's designed will have PV on the house roof as well as the pole-mounted. This is in order to get them enough electricity to cover their full needs.
Okay. And in my reading, I know you guys, um, stated that the module is, um, not quite as shown, but is it still 15 feet tall and 21 feet wide?
Um, so whatever the specs say here. So it is, let me see. Yeah, 20 feet wide and 15. So the array itself, where the pole, I mean, the, the modules are is, it's not 15 feet tall, um, because there's a snow clearance of about two or three feet. And also, the array never stands completely vertical, so, um, it's always at at some angle, so that's where you get the 15 feet.
All right, but it is 21 feet wide?
At least 20.
20.
20, but it, okay, it's 20 feet wide. How large is the house? I'm just trying to get a, a better sense of scale.
Uh, that's a question for the Livelys, I think. You know, about the width of the house doesn't have to be exact, but.
The width of the house is 40 feet.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, so this, this is gonna take up about half the width of the house. Is your, no, it, does it get put like on an angle, or it's like if you're driving, I'm just wondering if you're driving down Keegan Lane, you look over to the left, you're just gonna see, you know, a 20-foot wide solar array?
So this is why provided the pictures as you're going along, if you're just, you're driving north on Keegan Lane and the house is on your left, the pictures on, uh, I don't know which page it is. On three, page three, have the relative size. And because of Bob's Dog House, it actually obscures part of the array. Uh, virtually half of it, actually. And then, as you get around Bob's Dog House, because the array is not pointing directly at you on Keegan Lane there, you're on the side of the array. So you'll basically see a very, um, skewed, yeah. Ne- narrow slice of the array from the side.
Okay, 'cause I don't know if you can, if you can, this, this is the picture that I was looking at. Does it? Um, I, the pages I apologize are not numbered, and I took the staples out of them.
Yeah, so that's right.
I don't picture there. So to me, this looks like this array obscures almost the entire back of the house. And I'm just wondering if that's accurate.
So because you're seeing it sideways, it is possible that you don't see the back of the house. But that would be the same as if you put a shed up there. You wouldn't see the back side of the house.
Okay, I, that's, I, I understand that. I just, I'm just, I, I, it's not an objection, it's an observation.
Yeah.
You, as you're coming down, you have the shed, and then you have, you know, this huge, large, you know, solar array that's, that's blocking off the view of the house. I'm just concerned more for their re, if I can just finish. I was concerned more about the resale value and that negatively detracting from the home, if that was something they had considered as opposed to, um, as opposed to objection. I just, I was wondering if, you know, it just, it looks very large to me.
Well, a couple things, um, first off. On page two, Claire, uh, uh, I'm not sure, probably that would be a good idea in the future for us to ask for. Uh. So the array will be pointing easterly or south?
South.
Just?
South.
Dead south, okay. Um. So I see what you're talking about in relation to Keegan Lane. Going by on Keegan Lane, you're actually looking at the site of I, I, or south mostly. I mean, yeah, if you're coming from far enough away. But in that case, the tree's obscured. And the fence, which isn't on the bird's eye view.
Right. And, and, you know, and I realize that there, there's a lot of vegetation there now. But as you can see, even from the photos that are taken here, those, that visibility is not obscured the entire year.
No, no, it isn't.
I, I, like I said, these are not objections, these are observations in regards to the impact this is gonna have.
That's all, that's all right, that's what we do. Um, other question, Deb, if you can hold on one second.
Oh, sure, yeah, I, that's actually wrapped up kind of my concerns.
I thought the roof arrays, the roof array was already in place. Is it?
It, it, I believe it is. No?
No, no, roof arrays are not in yet.
So this is, this is, uh, a whole project, but this is the only thing you need a permit for. Got it? Okay, so that's, so that's the theory. It's all gonna be done in the same form. All right, Deb, do you have anything else?
Nope.
Okay, David Singer?
Hi Claire and John.
Hi David.
Um. Just one question to make sure I understand the height parts. On this page.
Yes.
There's a number here, right down here, that says total array height at tilt, including clearance, 13.76 feet. Is that the maximum height?
Yes.
Yeah.
Is that what that means?
That's what that means, yeah.
So from here to here?
Right.
From the ground to here?
Yeah.
That's right.
Thank you.
You all set? David?
These guys, but.
Okay, Peter? Yep, Peter?
I went down and looked at the location of the site. I think it's a pretty well-developed installation. I think, I think it'll, I think it'll fit in well, and I think it'll do a good job.
Okay. You all set, Peter?
Yes, I am.
Okay, thank you. Jim?
I took a ride over there on my bicycle twice today, and I believe it'll fit in A-OK, the fences around all the property. And I was just wondering, is there an anti-glare material on that, uh, gray solar panel?
Actually, I can answer that. Yes, all these panels come with anti-glare coatings now.
All my questions answered then, thank you. And we have letters to read too.
Yes, um, I don't actually have any questions at this point. So Jim, go ahead and read the letters, please.
Uh, to Zone and Board of Appeals from the Planning Board. Uh, the board has no issues with this request. To the, uh, Zone and Board of Appeals from the Inspector of Buildings. No comments or issues with the proposed project. Uh, to Zone and Board from the Fire Inspector. The Fire Department has no comments or issue with proposed solar project at 87 Thayer Road. For the DPW Engineer and Superintendent. No comments or issue with a proposed project. And from the Board of Health, the ZVA, no comments or issues with proposed project.
Okay. Um. Oh, gosh, we're, we're almost on time. Okay. Then, i- if there are no other questions uh, from the board members, anybody just wave your hand and oh, you're all set? All right, all right.
Awesome.
Okay, um. Peter, remember there's a delay on your microphone. I'm not sure why, but there is. Um. So I would say if the Livelys want to add anything, now's the time.
No, I think we're all set, thank you.
Okay, very good. And Claire and John, anything to add beyond what we already have?
We're good.
I don't think so, thank you.
Okay, very good. Then, uh, as I told the previous applicant, we will deal with this tonight. Um, you can stay. Uh. Oops, wrong one. You can stay for that, or you can, uh, just call Eric tomorrow.
Did we have any open public comments?
Right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
And that kind of a year.
That's why there's five of us.
Yeah, I know I was missing something. That's why I was shocked we were on time. Okay. Okay, so this is actually be the, uh, public comment section of this application, so anybody who has a public comment on the application of the Livelys, the property located somewhere in Greenfield, 87th Thayer Road, uh, for a pole-mounted solar array, now's the time. If you're going to comment, you need to tell us your name and your address, please. So, anybody to comment? Nope. Walter, I see you moved your mouse or something, so you're on screen now. Anybody, there's a, the, we opened at 7:31, public comment. Dooby dooby doo. Again, "The application for 87th Thayer Road, a pole-mounted solar array that conforms to all Greenfield solar regulations." Not hearing any comment. We sure we're going once? Twice, I gave you two minutes, okay. Then I'm gonna close the public comment at 7:33, gonna quickly ask any board members anything else to say, or questions? Not in the affirmative if you do, yeah, okay, we're seeing a lot of shaking heads, that's usually about me. Um, and the Livelys are good still, I assume?
Yes, thank you.
Alright, very good, thank you. So, we will deal with this tonight, a little bit later, and as I said, you can stay, or you can come back, or you can, uh, call Eric Torog tomorrow. This is not our first go-around with these, so I think, I think we'll be alright. Okay, moving on. Uh, as soon as I find my magic paper. That's the one. That's the wrong one, okay. Well. Uh, oh, I know why, in the wrong place, okay, yep. So, are the ethiers here? I'm hoping. If they are, they'd better say something quick.
We do have call-in user four, I'm not sure who that is.
Alright, um, that's all Donna Wallace. Alright, well, I gotta move that, hold on a second. Hey Jim? Jim Nguyen?
Hi.
Are you unmuted?
Yes.
Okay, uh, I cannot find, it's mixed in. Can you read the notice of hearing for the ethiers, please?
I can do that right now. "Application of Martha and Jerry Ethier for property located at 18 Shattuck Street, assessors map 95 lot 26, which is located in the urban residential RA zone district for a special permit pursuant to sections 200-4 dot 4 C-17 and 200-8 dot 3 of the zoning ordinance for an animal kennel to allow five personal house dogs at this location."
Ah, there we go. Okay, uh, so, is anybody here for the ethiers? Call-in user four, maybe? Uh, this is not good. Um.
Mr. Chair, does the applicant have to show up in order to proceed?
Uh, generally, yeah. Unless they let us know that they can't make it. Um, if they're not here, we could postpone it, we can do that on our own. Um, if they wanna withdraw, we have to have some indication from them that they wanna withdraw.
Yeah, just, could we have whoever call-in user four is identify themselves to make sure it's not the ethiers?
Well, beyond asking them to, I don't know how else to do it. They're not muted, so. Um, they really have to make the, the, uh.
We have a phone number for them, would you like me to call the phone number?
Yeah, Jim, why don't you do that, please?
Yeah, I mean, I would just hate for them to be like, you know, they just stepped away for a minute, and they're calling user four?
Yeah, I, I don't know. So, if call-in user four wants to tell us, or they can identify themselves, but short of that, we, we have no way of identifying them without them.
Yeah.
I don't know if I'm calling user four, but I'm not the person who you're looking for.
Okay.
Okay.
No, no problem.
That answers that mystery.
My name's Julia, and I am a new member of the board, but I was in touch with Eric about just listening tonight.
You're a new member of the board?
Yeah, I saw that on, on the website.
Deb? Well, nobody told us.
Right, I know, and, and that's why I'm just listening tonight.
So, we've had no communication from anybody about it, not the mayor's office, not anybody else. Um, so, I'm sorry, but I don't know who you are, I've had no communication with you. Um, I haven't had any emails or anything from anybody. I'm not, I'm not saying I don't believe you, but I, I, just saying, this is awkward.
Alright, can I rudely interrupt?
No.
The ethiers will be joining us shortly. They apologized.
Okay, well, they wanted a permit. Okay, um, so anyways, call-in number four, yeah, we'll, here, Eric will get in touch or something, I don't know. Um, that's fine, you don't have to, you don't have to, uh, you know, join in or whatever, um. Alright, so, while we're waiting for the ethiers, why don't we do the minutes from August, whatever it was? Uh, so, somebody wanna make a motion to accept the minutes?
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes from the last meeting of August 13, 2020.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion?
No.
And all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
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 Oh, no, I'm sorry, can't do it that way. Uh, Deb Jokes, motion on table.
Aye.
Alright, David Singer?
I think he stepped off for a second.
No. You, you, snooze, you lose. Uh, Peter Wozniak?
Yes.
Okay, Jim Nguyen?
Yes.
And I'm a yes, so the minutes are taking care of from August. Um, okay. The ethiers with us yet?
No, I just talked to Martha, and she said she would be calling in momentarily.
Okay. Well, while we're waiting, let's, uh, we wanna do Donna Wallace?
Sure.
That's a fairly straightforward one. By the way, I would note that the, uh, the planning board forwarded a positive recommendation, four to zero, on the application of Donna Wallace for property located at 95 Lund Drive, assessors map R-33 lot 52, which is located in the rural residential zoning district. For a special permit, uh, in order to allow a 20% reduction of the side yard setback along the west side from 20 feet to 16 feet at this location, uh, discussion of the board? Anybody? Yeah, David, go ahead.
Well, excuse me, Mr. Chair, what did I miss? You know, when you gotta go, you gotta go.
Yeah, I, I'm with you, uh, we did the minutes, and Jim Nguyen contacted the ethiers, so they're.
Okay, okay. I heard a vote, I heard a vote, but it was unanimous. Alright, the minutes. I would like to sit.
We're doing, Donna, we're doing the application.
Yeah, I understand, we're gonna vote on her, um. Two things, one is, I think she fulfilled the obligations of the section E2, A, B, and C, uh, under 5.3, and to add merit to her claim, uh, she has a pre-existing non-conforming side lot.
Yep.
Anyway, she's actually making it a little better. A couple of weeks ago, we just had the same thing in front of us for Franklin First.
Yep.
And, uh, so I would say, just to make her feel more comfortable and to help ourselves with this, uh, I, one, as a provision of the zoning bylaw that we could use to, uh, I don't see any change in the neighborhood from her doing that, and clearly none of, her neighbor didn't come to object, so I fully support the application.
Okie do, uh, Deb?
I, I have nothing additional to add on.
Yep, okay, Peter?
I have no additional questions.
Okay, Jim?
Uh, I have no additional questions, this will not adversely impact adjacent properties, I'm all for it.
Okay, somebody wanna make a motion, please? David, make a motion, please.
I move that, um, we, uh, allow the application of Donna Wallace for property located at 95 Lund Drive, assessors map R-33 lot 52, which is located in the rural residential RC zoning district for a special permit pursuant to sections 200-5.3 E2, 200-8.3, and 200, uh, dash 6.1 of the zoning ordinance in order to allow a 20 fo-, a 20% reduction of the side yard setback along the west side of the property from 20 feet to 16 feet at that lo-, at this location.
Very good, is there a second?
Second.
So, Jim Nguyen seconds, uh, any further discussion from the board? Saying no, all those in favor say, uh, uh, no, stop, wait. Deb Jokes?
I, aye.
Thank you, David Singer?
Yes.
And Peter Wozniak?
Yes.
Jim Nguyen?
Yes.
And I'll make it unanimous. So, Donna Wallace has her permit. Okay, now, I see we have a new call-in number five. And I'm assuming this, hoping this is the ethiers.
It is, sorry.
You wanna put it on the, you know, okay, whatever.
In the bad old days, we just would have, uh, we would have voted down and moved on, but we're, we're a sensitive group here, so. Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, um, well, we have already opened this, we've, we've read the, uh, the notice of public hearing and the application, so, um, why don't you go ahead and tell us about the dogs? Martha?
Yep.
Yeah, you have to, you have to talk now, yeah.
What's that?
You have to talk, you have to tell us what you wanna do and why you wanna do it.
We have five small house dogs, all of them are rescues. Um, we've already got our yard all fenced in, and we just need permission to get the kennel license.
Okay, um, so, let me ask some questions here, uh, you're on Shattuck Street, 18 Shattuck Street, um, do you own the property?
Uh, our son does.
Okay, and so the owner's okay with this?
Yep.
Okay, um, and yours, how long have you had these dogs?
Um, the oldest one is 12. And the youngest one is four, we've probably had them, had five, all five of them for a, a year and a half.
Okay, so n- now you're aware that you need a kennel permit to have over three. Um, but you are not planning on breeding these dogs, they are just personal dogs, correct?
Right, and they're all, they're all neutered.
Yeah, we all, we all are sympathetic to that. Um, okay, and, uh, is, is there an outside, uh, is the, is the outside, is there fenced in yards?
Yeah.
Okay, and there is shelter available outside for them?
Yep, and most of it's in the house, anyway.
Right, okay. And what kind of dogs are they? Breed?
There's a Westie, three Yorkies, and a Chihuahua.
Okay, so they're all small dogs. Okay, um, and you just, you're just looking to comply with the law, as it is in the town of Greenfield, okay. Um, and you're not, you understand that if the board's inclined to grant a permit, it will most likely attach conditions that these dogs not be replaced. You can have any dog under the number of four. You don't need to talk to us about that, but if you go over three, um, then, yeah, you have to get a kennel permit. Uh,
Okay.
Alright, um, I think that's all I got for now, um, we'll go down the line, Deb Jokes?
Um, I don't have any questions.
Okay, David Singer?
Hi folks, um, you did wonderfully, uh, provide us with a map of your property, I really appreciate it, it helps, uh, to identify what's going on. And I noticed in the backyard that you have something called a fence. You have a fence along south border, you have a fence between the pool area, you have a little fence between the garage and the south border, you have a fence between the garage and the house, so that's the area where the dogs will play?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, that's all, that's my question, thank you.
Yep, that's fine. Um, Peter Wozniak? Well, Peter is muted. See if I can unmute you, Pete. You're unmuted. Peter?
The question I have is, what do you do with the refuse, the dog droppings?
We pick up.
Alright, I mean, does, you do that on a weekly basis, or, you know, kinda treat it so the smell doesn't get outrageous in the summertime?
I do it on a daily basis.
Alright. That's the question I have.
Okay, that's fine.
Question, Peter.
Um, Jim Nguyen?
Uh, no questions, but we do have correspondence.
Yep, um, hold on one second. Yep, okay, um, so Jim, go ahead and read the correspondence, please.
Uh, "To the ZVA from the engineering superintendent, DPW, no comments or issues with this proposed project. From the fire prevention officer to the ZVA, no comments or issues with proposed project. From the inspector of buildings to the ZVA, no comments or issue with proposed project. From the board of health to the ZVA, no comments or issue with proposed project. And from the planning board to the ZVA, board has no issues with this request."
No, I hear that noise is, that's him. That's it, Jim?
That's it, yep.
Okay, thank you. Alright, um, Martha, is there anything else you wanna add?
No.
Okay, so, you weren't on before, I'll explain how this works, uh, now that we're, oh no, sorry, hold on a second. Alright, so now we're gonna do, thanks Deb for throwing things at me, um, we'll open up for public comment on the application of Martha and Jerry Ethier for a kennel license for five personal dogs at 18, uh, Shattuck Street. So, anybody who wants to make a public comment, you just need to tell us, uh, who you are and where you live, uh, assuming you're from Greenfield. So, any public comment, now's the time. Anybody? Oh, I think that's David. David, are you typing?
Click it. I'll unmute.
That's fine. Oh, who's, who needs to unmute? Jim? Hold on. There, now you're unmuted. Peter is unmuted. Okay, any public comment? Going once? Twice, on the application of the ethiers for a kennel license for five personal dogs? No? Okay, then we're gonna close the public comment at 7:51. Uh, okay, so Martha, nothing else? Are there any other questions from the board? Just wave your hand or something if you do, no, we're good, okay. So, Martha, um, the way this will work, we're gonna take care of another piece of business first, and we will deal with this tonight. We are likely to put conditions on a permit, if we're inclined to grant a permit. Um, Eric Torog will get the information tomorrow, so you can call him if you don't wanna hang around. Um, from then, he will type it up and file it. and file it with the city clerk. From the time it's filed with the city clerk, there's a twenty day appeal period in which anybody who feels agreed by the actions of the board may appeal to a higher court. If at the end of twenty day appeal period, all appeals have been settled, uh, or there are none, then you can go ahead and, uh, get your license. Uh, and Eric will walk you through that. So do you understand that, Martha?
Yep.
Okay, very good. Then, uh, then we're gonna close the hearing overall on the Ethers, and we'll deal with that, um, a little bit later. So now, board, I would like to move back to the application of Meredith and Eric Lively for property located eighty-seventh Thayer Road. Okay, uh, so this is the.
You want me to make a motion?
Not yet. Let me say my thing. Um, this is the discussion and decision on the application of Meredith and Eric Lively property located eighty-seven thirty road assessors map R twenty-six lot twenty-one B, which is located in suburban residential zoning district with special warrant pursuant to sections two hundred dash four point three eighteen, two hundred dash point seven one six, and two hundred dash eight point three zoning ordinance in order to allow the installation of a five point four four kilowatt one pole mounted solar PV system at this location. So, uh, why don't we, uh, go down the line and then we'll make a motion, okay? So Deb Jelks?
I don't have any additional comments.
Okay, uh, David Singer?
I don't have any additional comments. I feel that the applicant has complied with the zoning ordinance and I would approve it.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Peter Wozniak? Is muted, my fault. There, you're open now, buddy.
I have no additional questions or comments.
Okay, thank you, Peter. Jim Nguyen?
I have no additional questions or comments.
Okay, so, um, I think just to flesh this out a little bit, this is not the, the first, the time we've dealt with this. I think the presentation is okay. I think, um, the plan is okay. I think having the fence up is a good addition. I don't see the need for additional screening. We've had no correspondence on this, and it's a dense neighborhood, so there are plenty of, uh, notifications that went out. Uh, we've had no negative correspondence, I should say, and nobody came to speak at the public comment. Um, so I'm okay with the application as is, um, and as it was pointed out earlier, there is no, there's no septic lines to be crossed or, uh, wires uh, so forth, so, uh, to be trenched. So I think we're all, all good with that. So, uh, if somebody wants to make a motion, David, you already requested, go ahead.
Sure, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yep.
Uh, make a motion to approve the application of Meredith and Eric Lively for property located eighty-seventh Thayer Road assessors map R twenty-six lot twenty-one B, which is located in the suburban residential zoning district for a special permit pursuant to sections two hundred dash four point three subsection eighteen, two hundred dash seven point one six, and two hundred dash eight point three of the zoning ordinance in order to allow the installation of a five point four four kilowatt one pole mounted solar PV system at this location as outlined in the attached documents for the zoning application.
And the only, uh, condition I would want to set, I think, just to be safe, is that, uh, it complies with all, uh, Greenfield Solar zoning regulations. And that, that takes care of the height issue. Just, I mean, I know they've already said they're gonna do that, that makes sure they, they have to comply with that. So are you okay with accepting that, David, as a friendly, or as a condition?
Yes, yes, Mr. Chair.
Alright, so do we have a second? Deb Jelks, I see you seconding.
Yep, I second.
Any further discussion on the application of the Livelys? Saying none, we'll take a vote. Um, Deborah Jelks?
Yes.
David Singer?
Yes.
Peter Wozniak?
Yes.
Uh, James Nguyen?
Yes.
And Mark Mullany makes it unanimous, so there we go. Uh, okay, so Livelys, I think they're gone, but that's fine. Uh, Claire Chang's still hanging in there. You can go now. Alright, uh, good luck.
It was nice to see you, thank you. You're welcome. Good to see you guys, too. Take care.
Okie doke.
We hope to be back.
Bye.
Bye, hi, Dave.
Alright, I don't have that fatty cake stuff. Okay. Uh, now, I will, let's take up the Ethers' application. So I'm gonna read you some, um, some stuff here in a second. Anyways, this is, we haven't done, uh, a personal dog kennel license in a while. And it's basically three years, um. But again, the issue is, we've had no negative correspondence. We've had nobody at the public, uh, come who said no. Um, so usually what we do in cases like this is we put on some conditions. Um, one of which is, uh, removal of the, uh, feces. Um, one of which is usually the, the maximum number of dogs, and that is the dogs, um, how shall we say, move on to doggy heaven. They're not replaced. Um, so, and again, anybody can keep three dogs without talking to us at all. Um, and I, the, the, the thing we need to keep in mind is that this is not a breeding kennel situation or anything like it. So, um, and that, one, we always put on all kennel things, and I think somebody remember this, um, Jim particularly. Uh, so we, we will make a condition that the description of the animal control officer, they may make an unscheduled site visit. And, uh, the animal control officer will submit a report to the board within two weeks after the site visit. If the animal control officer submits two negative reports to the board, the applicant should come before the ZVA during the next regularly scheduled meeting. Uh. I think that, you know, and, and then the other thing, I'm looking, again, I'm looking back to use the two different permits we did, essentially the same uh, conditions, and that the fence be maintained, uh, submitted in the application. So I'm just letting you know, that's what we usually do. Um, doesn't mean we have to, but it's usually a good, um, a good form.
A good, a good result.
Yeah, exactly. Thank you. Um, so with that, uh, this is the discussion and decision, the application of the Ethers for property located eighteen Shattuck Street for a kennel license for five personal dogs. Uh.
You want me to read the motion?
Yeah, you wanna?
Yeah, let me read the motion, and then we'll just have restrictions on it, and then we can go to vote. Um.
Thank you.
Make a motion to approve the application of Martha and Jerry Eether for property located eighteen Shattuck Street assessors map ninety-five lot twenty-six, which is located located in the urban residential RA zoning district for a special permit pursuant to sections two hundred dash four point four C seventeen and two hundred eight point three of the zoning ordinance and the definitional, definitional section of the zoning ordinance for an animal kennel to allow five personal house dogs at this location, subject to the following restrictions.
Right, um, why don't I pry those out? Uh, conditions. One, all dog feces shall be properly disposed of off-site on a routine basis. Uh, two, the applicants may keep the existing five dogs, with the condition that with the removal or expiration of any of the existing dogs in excess of three, that they shall not be replaced.
Should not be what?
Replaced.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, um. Third condition, the description of the animal control officer, unscheduled site visits shall be conducted at the property. The animal control officer shall submit a report to the board uh, within two weeks after the site visit. If the animal control officer submits two negative reports to the board, the applicant shall come before the ZVA during her next regularly scheduled meeting. Uh, for barriers sufficient to contain the dogs such as, uh, such as a fence. Um. Shall be erected and or maintained. Uh. The kennel, this kennel license is not for the purposes to maintain a dog-related business.
To what? I'm sorry, Mark, I meant.
No, that's alright, yeah, I don't, it's a, it's a personal.
It's a personal, it's a personal, so why don't we say it's a personal kennel license instead of a commercial kennel license?
I think we are.
Okay, but we say it.
So we don't, we don't need the last part, the number, uh, the.
You don't need the last part, okay.
Right, yeah, we don't need that, that's more, that was a different issue. Okay, that's, that's all I got for conditions. Um, any other board members have anything else they want to say on it, or any other condition they want to add?
Nope.
No.
Alright.
No.
David, you're good, okay. Alright, then, we need a second on this.
Second.
Peter, was that you?
Yes, it was.
Okay, that's fine. Um, so seconded by Peter. Any further discussion? Saying none, all those in favor say, ah, yeah. Yeah, many years of experience, so. So we need to do a voice vote. Um, Deborah Jelks?
Yes.
David Singer?
Yes.
Peter Wozniak?
Yes.
Uh, Jim Nguyen?
Yes.
Mark Mullany makes it unanimous. Okay, so I don't know if Martha's still with us.
I am.
Okay, so, uh, call Eric. You know, maybe tomorrow, maybe Monday, I forgot tomorrow's Friday, um, but certainly, certainly Monday, he should be able to, you know, explain what you have to do from here, okay?
Okay, thank you very much.
Alright, thank you, good luck.
Thank you, have a good night.
Alright, um, and I'm looking, I'm thinking. So, yeah, we will have an October meeting. It will be seven.
That's okay, I gotta get my phone out anyway.
October eighth.
Did we vote to allow the withdrawal of the, uh, applicant term without prejudice?
No, we did not, but we were about to.
I'm sure, yeah.
For the board members, um, next regular meeting will be October eighth, Thursday. And now we do need a motion to allow the withdrawal without prejudice of the Palashianos. I hope I'm saying from, uh, for the application, one sixty-seven Log Plain Road West for a permit. Uh. Yeah, anyway, just allow them to withdraw it without prejudice. So I will, alright, David made it, I'm gonna second that. Um, any further discussion? Saying none, we'll do a voice vote. Deborah Jelks?
Yes.
Uh, David Singer?
Yes.
Uh, Peter Wozniak?
Yes.
James Nguyen?
Yes.
And Mark Mullany makes it unanimous, okay? So we're gonna let them withdraw it, uh, it did not meet criteria to come before us, so, um, they're gonna rethink their, their, their whole scene there. Okay, um, so as I said, I know we have a couple of things in the hopper for October. Um. And the last I talked to somebody at the mayor's office will be staying remote at least through the end of the year. For miracle, uh, vaccine or cure.
This is the greatest thing since sliced bread. I mean, I love this.
First of all, I save a dollar every month.
Yeah, that's it, that's it. Well, don't worry, the money you already gave is gaining interest, compounding.
Yeah, sure.
Yeah, right. So.
It's in your Christmas club.
Oh my gosh, you're dating yourself, David. Um, you're dating all of us. Um, yeah, that's fine. So that's all the business we have for tonight. Um. So keep it.
Everybody stay healthy.
Yeah, you too.
Healthy, everybody. Always a pleasure.
Yeah.
Alright, we'll be in touch.
Do we want to talk to Julia at all?
What's that?
Uh, uh.
Well, I, I was just, I didn't know if we wanted to take a minute or two and talk to Julia for a second, or no?
No.
Okay.
Well, we have none.
I'm gonna call Donna Wallace, because I spoke with her yesterday.
You did, that's great, okay. Uh, so, so without objection, then we'll stand adjourned at eight oh, six P M.
Say goodnight to my cat.
What you want in October? Good health.
Good night, same to you. Stay healthy, everybody, stay safe.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night.